I didn't know weasels stored food when it's like they store it.
They they just kill it where it is and if they eat it, they eat it. They they kill everything.
You're just killers.
Well, these were all piled in one little pile together, separate from the nest. So I was like, okay, this is weird.
We had a big.
Oh.
We are going to call the meeting to order at six oh two P M. And if everybody you stand for the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Do we have the need for an executive session at this time? That's okay. Um, we are going to adjourn the public meeting at six oh four P M. Okay, individual personnel issues. They have a motion. Some will. Thank you, Chris, and a second.
Okay.
Thank you, Molly. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, we will be back as quickly as possible. We're gonna wait just Benny's usually pretty quick, so we'll just give him a second to, you know. As Gene Jordan used to say, bio breaks. Well, it is, but. I I think that in terms of gene, it's something that's that's said in the military.
It's just weird.
You know.
I know. That's true.
I know.
Okay, so we are going to reconvene into open session at six twenty nine. Thank you all for waiting. Correspondence, there is none. Policy discussion on board for tonight is maximum heat in schools.
For openers.
Yeah, for openers. I know you have quite a pile there.
Yeah, so um, we've got a couple of things that we need to take action on. One of them is um, we need to have a policy on maximum heat in schools. Here, I'm just gonna pass these around. There's that there's a bunch of them. It looks like they're not in order, but. Um, you may remember that Governor Hokel signed that law that says you can't essentially. You have to take measures at eighty-two degrees in instructional spaces and then you have to um. Relocate um at eighty-eight degrees where practical. So there's that little caveat at the end that gives you an out, but um. Honestly, once you make that law, you can't really, you know, and then schools, I mean, so for for example, this coming Monday. The um, there's a number of schools who I think are gonna release early, the ones who don't have air conditioning. And the majority of schools actually do have air conditioning. Our biggest problem is the C E A. We have air condition portable units there that we use for summer school that we have in most classrooms. So we are, our plan is to, they're not that efficient, and in fact, they generate some heat in the classroom. Depending how how hot it is, um, if it if it cools at night. And we can get through most of the day and then we keep the the shades drawn and we use those air conditioners. Then I think that we can limp along on the afternoon of uh on uh Monday. We have a half day already on Tuesday, so Tuesday morning we should be fine because that's the other hot day coming up. Um, but we have to have a policy and um, so at our next meeting, I'm gonna use. The proposed policy, which is really just restating the law. For us to to adopt, but it just means that you have to take mitigation measures at eighty-two degrees. And you have to be not in those spaces at eighty-eight where practical. So we are going to, if we need to in the future, just so you know. In the in the T R A, we've got the auditorium and we have the third floor that are air conditioned. So we can get the whole school in those spaces if we have to. Um, we can, in the high school, we've got the gym and the auditorium and this uh space that are all pretty sizable. So we can um figure things out and reconfigure. It's the C E A is a little bit challenging if it gets super hot and those air conditioners don't um do enough. So what, we're just gonna have to keep monitoring it. But we have already told teachers that if once it hits eighty-two, please pull your shades. You know, turn off unnecessary electrical equipment, um, try to ventilate as much as possible.
Mostly during the head morning anyhow, yeah.
So, but again, we have to have a policy on that.
Is there anybody on overnight?
So.
That's because I know what my our open doors, my automatic. But it's only supposed to get down to about sixty, I think.
At night.
Looks like.
Scott's working with our H VAC system to pull more cool air in during the night right through the system. So it's also, so the building's also secure um and uh do it that way. And then he also can monitor electronically what the temperatures are in the room. So we can see if we need to, you know, look, because some rooms get hotter than others, like the second floor in the T R A is very hot.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's our plan. Um, you know, we are gonna probably this, we're probably gonna have to. Think about long range planning in the next project. It's very expensive.
Maybe just give her this putting in a bunch of single units in their buildings.
Who did that?
G A.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Is there a way to, as part of the next? Hundred thousand dollar project of like getting the cafeteria over there?
We just um in the T R A.
No, at the um.
At the C E A.
At the C E A.
Yeah, we just had a, you wanna talk about that? We had a meeting today.
Yeah, so um, every five years, uh, we have to do a building condition survey. And it's all about your plan and really it's a framework for future capital projects. It's really a multi uh meeting uh process where we we started back in Danning area. We had a bigger meeting today and then over summers where a lot of uh the consultants walk the buildings, review the. Facilities and then we come together and meet again and that's where we kind of uh develop priorities of, you know, um. What would be the focus for the next project? Uh, there was always a very nice condensed report that has to be submitted to the state. Uh, we paid for that. We're probably gonna be at the next board meeting bringing to you that agreement um for approval. Um, but we've been using Ash McGraw along. Um, again, it makes sense to use the same kind of architect that we've been. You know, uh, working with for the last couple of decades.
I like how you put that the last couple of decades because the thing is, it's that they're already familiar with the buildings and.
Exactly, and like even today, uh, we were talking about we're paying after um for an air conditioning study specifically to. Uh, figure out the needs of the buildings. Um, and they brought up something I didn't know about today that even the three on. And the current uh air conditioning systems um is going away.
Ones we just did.
Yes, apparently there's a new environmental um.
Impact on it.
Regulations and uh so that'll be also part of the report to really say, well, we need to do to be back in compliance. And then what would it look like for us to do is kind of district wide air conditioning? But again, we'll develop that plan, but then we'll kind of figure out, you know, what is the priority in the next project? Are we really looking at classroom to classroom? Are we gonna, you know, look at whatever we can afford, really? Is it the bigger spaces? Is it a floor? You know, we kind of go through that.
The gym and the cafeteria.
Yeah, like even if, if we can't do the whole building, getting the C E A, getting them to, you know, one or two places where it's air conditioned. To help us kind of move forward.
So so what is the timeframe, you know, if they're gonna be looking, when would, when would it actually be?
The next capital project.
Right, yeah.
I mean, and then we were talking about a little bit today. Um, again, we really do try to maximize our building rate ratios. So we try to go about for product as soon as we can get full reimbursement back. Um, so this one is now done, thankfully. Um, we can start planning a project really once this report's done, we'll start working on timelines. But in in theory, we could have a boat in three years and potentially another product in five.
And that's what I was thinking is about five years, uh, real realistically and, I mean, it's just getting warmer and warmer.
So we're gonna be limping along. Yeah, I mean, that that is, I mean, if, with with all the things that are in. That are being assessed, I mean, there may be things that we could, you know, here outside of a project, you know, um.
That's what I was asking if it might be possible for the next hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Are there any grant programs available? You're really good at that.
Yeah, not for this because everybody wants it.
Yeah, and they're trying to say, you know, you guys are demanding this, so how about giving us some money to do it?
It was hinted a little bit, but you know, we can hint all they want.
But it wasn't included in the budget this year, right?
Right, right, right.
So, you know, as moving forward, maybe.
Cell phone, so.
Yeah, so we are.
Discuss anything about like the mini splits that are real popular now and that are pretty cost efficient?
Yeah, um, and those are conversations where the mechanic engineer really kind of looks at everything that's out there. And even across the district, we have certain split rooms like that. But the latest he was even pushing for today is if we went to the classroom by classroom method and how we did the pre-K classrooms, they had standalone. Instead of like the ones all the way by the windows. So that's kind of, I guess, the current um. Preferred method, but again, things change all the time.
Yeah. It's pretty cool here in the high school, doesn't it?
It it is cooler in general here. I mean, I don't know that not everybody would agree with me.
Well, I guess.
But and it depends on how.
Right, but it actually we have air in here, but it does seem like it stays pretty cool in the high school.
Yes.
Even when I went to school.
And and it has to do, it has to do with the age of the building and it also has to do with what? The wind, where the windows are facing.
Can get airflow that I I think the T R A, the second floor is the is the worst.
Is worse, so I would agree.
There's one side, a couple of sides on the C E A where the sun just infirmity all the time and they got screens and they're pulling them down. Yeah.
Yeah.
Standalos and you go in there and you'll see it's there and everybody will be sitting.
Okay, well, keep us posted on on Monday and Tuesday.
I'm I'm, I mean, it's it's a real hardship to just let people go suddenly early, which is what other schools are planning to do. I'm really gonna try not to do that. I think we can, we can make do and we can. Get through.
Maybe show the C E A kids a movie in the high school auditorium.
It's kindergarten graduation in there on Monday afternoon, so we can't miss that. That's a biggie.
Cool party graduation.
There you go. Fit the whole C A into the pool.
How cute would that be? I love Tom's idea. Adore.
Okay, so another um policy for discussion, um, when we just changed, as a matter of fact, um, our cell phone and other electronic devices policy. Again, this is this change in education law um that we explicitly need to say. Because our language said pretty much you had to follow school rules. That gave us some, you know, leeway for whatever we decided the rules were. But we have to explicitly say that they're not allowed now and and the language that's there in red is what needs to be included. And on the next page in the in the policy that is now required from the state, um, it also says that you have to outline specifically. How parents should contact the school. I mean, we also have that in our handbooks, but um.
Can I ask a question, Joanne? So. It, is this new law affecting all grades or just a certain grade and up? That's what I couldn't figure out.
It's all grades, but it's see, it's not in elementary. So you don't have to do any one thing.
Right.
There's, you can decide yourself how you're gonna handle it and in the elementary school here, they're, you know, it's just if they secretly have them in their backpacks someplace. It's not an issue. It's the culture is just completely different.
Right.
So it really doesn't start until sixth grade. That's when there's like a shift and that's where kids all wanna have phones and they have phones and they wanna have them out and.
But if we start having a problem in the fourth or fifth grade levels that are in the tier.
Could change it, but you're also in one room, you're with one teacher, you know, I mean, it's all your your bag.
Turning the halls alone and.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
So, uh, yeah, certainly it's, I mean, we would have to change if suddenly the world changed and every second grader came in with a phone, trying to be online.
Oh, that'd be scary.
So I just have a question about B that's been added on school grounds, any building structure. That, would that apply to kids who keep their cell phones in their cars, like the high schoolers?
It's it's in the facilities, like within.
Any, okay, because it says in any land, you know, land contained with the boundaries, so I'm just, just clarifying. I didn't think.
Yeah, I mean, we can.
Include that, but.
No, yeah.
Oh, it does say athletic playing.
School.
Is that only during school hours?
Instructional day.
Instructional day.
So it's like you have a good class out, yeah.
They can have it out, yeah.
And you know, the question like, for example, the Foses has got a way more complicated issue because kids are coming from all different schools.
Yeah, and they hadn't started any of this.
No, no.
And to be honest, what what they're, this is making sense.
Yeah.
One of my favorite policies.
I'm really glad we took care of it. I guess.
Yeah.
Don't have a bump set all the biscuits they're gonna have.
All right, and then the sick bank um policy, which you can see um here, there's a red line version. Um, there was just old languages. This is some of the contracts that we were just talking about that we have just settled. Um, this is included. And it it there were things that were incorrect, so it's just an opportunity to make some changes. Um, it doesn't change any, anything that's prescribed in it. It just um is more accurate. It includes pretty much everybody who does not have a separate sick bank outlined in their contract that they have to their bargaining unit. So, which is a lot of people and before it before it just had, it said like bus drivers, I think it was said in there and it's um. This is just more inclusive language, so I don't, you wanna make sure that.
I have a question and it may be for Zach and Joanne. So maybe it's the bargaining units themselves. But I know that some of our bargaining units have the ability to give sick days away to people when people need them. Is that not here or is that by individual bargaining units?
Nobody knows that.
Yeah, I mean, it's potentially other sick banks operate like that. Uh, we, and I think we have four other, we have four sick banks in total in the district. None of them have that uh ability to do that.
Is it because they just have chose not to or don't know that it could be part of their contract? Do you have any idea?
Um, well, the other units that have the sick bank is normally spout out in the contract, which would be, again, collectively bargained. But again, uh, sick banks, theory, you know, the district is giving days.
Right.
For that.
Right.
To be a little protective of what we decide to give out.
I I know we don't see it a lot, but periodically somebody has a. Cancer or something that has really just taken away their sick days and they'll contact us and say, would, you know, anybody wanna donate one or two? And people don't donate a lot, but it does help that person get the extension they need. So I was just curious as why we might not be doing it, so.
Can I just comment on that? Uh, because I worked at B M T University and it was that way as well, but so we used our, it was our sick time.
Yep.
So the way that the sick increases is already donate. A day, a couple of days in the beginning, so like we, you know, everyone already donates their time, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it's a little different at Cortland, so you can take a day and give it to someone.
Yeah, I I know, right, but that's not part of the sick bank. It's your personal time. Right, and so I know that that has happened here, but that's not part of the sick bank.
I I don't think it's happened here even for personal people because I think we were told we couldn't do it for somebody once recently, so we don't do it that way.
It is nice if you can.
But I mean, this system works. I mean, what happens is then there's uh established criteria for, you know. You have to have worked, a lot of them have to work here for a year and and then you can only get so many days and and. The committee then decides based on the criteria. So it's not like, well, I don't like this person or I do like this person or I think this person took too much time off to begin with.
Right.
It's just, you know, it's really structured this way and I think, you know, most units like it that way. So it's not a, you know, popularity contest or see, or people aren't left to feel like it's unfair. They understand what the rules are at the beginning. And it's not like, well, I I put a plea out, but nobody wanted to give me a day, you know?
Yeah.
I I know the county did it for a long time and it was across all units, across the whole place. But I'm sure they ran into trouble because then they said there was a limit as as to like how much the individual could donate to someone else. Because.
We do, we do have that too.
Yeah, they they changed that, that hadn't said, but I I'm sure that it kind of fit with your reason, but that's another thing that's. If if anybody looks into that, you wanna look into what, where you could end up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And and had it off first.
I find it interesting.
Do you want to add on this, uh, not the um temperature one? Will the format be the same as our standard?
Yeah, we'll put it on, I mean, so.
But the content looks good.
So all of these will come for first reading next meeting.
Which has to be here. Um, it 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 reads well.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Send in your comments.
I have, I have to be prepared and gifts, so don't anyone leave.
So we got food. We brought it just for you, Tiana.
It's a small speed. It's not very big.
Sick bank is, it's just you have it on its first read? I thought it was. Oh, no, okay, never mind. Sick bank is not for discussion, it's for first read.
Oh.
Stacy's right on it.
Thank you, Stacy.
So we just need to send any changes like that we would want. Okay.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
If you, if we don't have any, you just use this stuff.
No, if you're ready, if you're ready. I just didn't think she.
Yeah, I just, there was just a couple of things I'll send to Stacy. All righty. Yes.
And again, um, what's laid out in it is not any different. It's just really the groups and how they're referred to, that the language.
I think Tom would prefer to go back to first reading, so just be discussion tonight. That's what Tom said.
Oh, no, I'm just saying that usually when I see, yeah, I I I don't know, I like to sit and look at it and then make notes and stuff. I didn't.
Well, it was the the sick bank was in our.
In your packet.
It wasn't.
No, it was just added.
Oh, it was just added. Gotcha.
That's where I thought it.
Okay.
It's up to you.
If it's not, no, if it's if it's pretty much, then yeah, it's okay. There's not many.
Well, you can decide when we get to that one and if you want to table it as a first reading and that's fine. Okay, so next policy for um first reading is weapons in school, gun-free schools act for students. May have a motion. Thank you, Chris, and a second.
Second.
Thank you, Tiana. Okay.
So you may remember that we had um our attorney look over those um policies. They. We had some questions after we had reviewed them. The weapons in school for the community and we were considering adding and the web, because that was a a Erie one suggestion. Um, and then uh we had the, just to update the weapons in school for for students. So if you read what his recommendations are there. I don't know if you got a chance to do that.
Yeah, yep.
So he thinks that we don't need the community one, especially because it's against the law.
So basically said, we don't need it because it is the law. They can't do it.
Right, um, go refresh my memory. Did he say though it was okay to upload it just as a reminder to the workplace? Is that?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, so we could, but we don't have to.
Right.
So I guess it's just the call of the board.
Well, I I think that when I read through what he wrote, I think there's some discrepancy as to how he looks at it and how the public would and how it's written. Because he said firearms and most things say it's a, that's firearm free. It doesn't say weapon free. Not that I think people would say, well, I can bring this in because it's a, it has a blade this long, but it's.
A machete.
Right, I I was just saying that the way that it's been publicized and it's out there and there's signs out, it's it specifically says firearms. But I'm sure in this description, a weapon is a lot more things than a firearm.
Right.
Yeah, and that's a lot of things. And that's what the community one includes. It does the air pistol, cartridge, guns propelled, yeah, so.
But also he does say in his letter that um it's certainly appropriate and will meet the needs of the district should the board decide to adopt such a policy. And and I agree, having the policy might be a good idea in terms of serving as a reminder to to the community that.
And that's why I brought it forward in the first place.
I like the idea of keeping it.
Yeah, so.
So, but for the students, because we were doing the students one first, um, did anybody have any questions or things they wanted changed on that or?
So we had questions about um if the.
Archery.
Yeah, and so it does say that if the superintendent or their designee is hasn't approved it. So anything that would be curricular or like, I think the example he uses to like a gun safety or, you know, something like that, that would be an approved use in the school. So in the policy, and I also talked to him about this just verbally to to clarify. The policy gives that, you're not, you just can't bring in a weapon unless you've gotten it pre-approved or it's part of the the school program.
Right.
So it's.
He feels like the policy says that by saying that it has to, if it's not approved by the superintendent or their designee.
You said you have to sign off, which I guess is the same thing, but I mean, would you?
Yeah.
Would that be?
I mean, I can't, I can't. Yeah, I mean, so I think there was also an example of like a civil war reenactment or something like that, like we, before we would allow a student to walk into the school with any kind of. Gun, even though it looked like it was old, they would have had to have permission and we would, you know.
And that would be easier because that's a one, one time thing. If this is something that's standing, we do every year, how does that?
Because it's part of the the approved program of the school. And so that that is approved by the superintendent or their or their designee. That's why he feels like if it's part of the instructional program. Or it's like a school sponsored something that we do, then.
Just gets grandfathered in, I I don't.
Sanctioned um in the language.
Right, so having the archery um module in physical education is sanctioned curriculum, so that's built into it.
Right.
And I know they don't use pointed arrow things that are really done, but.
But feel there, yeah, they're they're pointing.
But then they also have like color guard. They use sort of the fake guns that can look, you know, so but they're approved curriculum stuff, right?
So I I also saw the last time when it was listed was starting pistols as well for track meets.
Yeah, and that's again.
And that would be just, okay, I I just.
So those are approved uses. I mean, I I, you know, I I mean, we can change that.
Oh, no, 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 no.
I mean, he thought that it was appropriate. Um. Part that he said.
I mean, the laws don't always make common sense. I mean, if.
Well, we want our school though, because we want people to look at our website and say, understand what the rules.
Yeah, okay.
So I think, you know, within reason.
Yep.
We can tweak it if we think that it needs to be more clear.
I just didn't want somebody to think that they could, nothing to get in trouble because they thought it was longstanding and it's like, oh, wait, no, you can't do that.
So he thinks that with the, with the exception of those students who receive prior written permission from the board or its designee. No student may bring in or possess firearm or weapon on school property. So he thinks that first line means that, you know, we've sanctioned the the curriculum, we've we've, you know, arranged for a program. We've had a a special club that's about, you know, weapon safety or gun safety, um, that that's permission.
Yep.
Yep. And it's not like Murphy hands out the starter pistol to the students.
Just no.
No, no, I get what you're saying though.
Just totally because the way it looks and the sound of it and what it is, it's just, it can make some people very upset if it goes off and you see it and.
We had to bring our own.
Um, just just for conversation, I worked at Finch Hollow, it used to be a one-room schoolhouse. People would come in and say, yeah, we would come in. And then when we come in, everybody would set their guns in the corner over here.
Oh, my God.
Like it, and it was just. I'm just saying how things they would walk to school and all the students would just put the guns they carried to school and picking up lunch or dinner on the way in and out. It just, it was a very interesting thing.
Yeah, what they done and hanging up in the pickup truck.
Yeah.
A little different today. Eighties and now are totally different.
Yep.
Just one for eleven years.
No. Okay.
Okay, any more discussion on this one? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, weapons in school regarding the community, um, may have a motion. Thank you, Chris, and a second.
Second.
Thank you, Tiana. Um, so we kind of started the conversation on this one. My personal opinion is I think we should have the policy. It serves as a reminder to people that there is a law against it and a policy against it. That's my opinion.
I agree.
I agree.
Was there any of the language in there that you felt uncomfortable with or don't think it's quite right or? Was there any of the language in there that you felt uncomfortable with or don't think it's quite right or? Any further discussion on it? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstain? So for the sick bank, would you be more comfortable, Tom, if we? You're sure?
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, for first reading appendix A, sick bank, non-instructural personnel may have a motion. Thank you, Chris, and a second. Thank you, Benny. Do we have further discussion on it, which is always welcome?
There's just some spacing issues and things, but Stacy, when you go through it, you can check it.
It's hard when you're doing the red copy to.
And then I, if I see anything when it comes back for second policy, I'll let it.
Anybody else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstain? Okay, we come to, um, the ex officio student member of the Board of Education, may have a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Tiana, and a second. Thank you, Aubrey. Um, do we have any? Anything that needs to be changed, any further questions?
So, um, I changed a little bit from the first, um, time we look at this. Um, attendance and removal section, um, we talked about that a little bit last time. And it, uh, did say students, uh, student board members are expected to attend all public meetings. Um, and I changed it to student board members are expected to attend all public meetings unless legitimate reasons interfere. Um, and the superintendent has been notified, uh.
What makes sense?
Founded to repeatedly miss meetings without an excuse.
Yeah, so I talked to some of the, like, other schools about this and everybody seems to have some kind of clause in there for fear that you know, that kids need to know that when they sign up essentially that they, and we're gonna have two members so that they can, because we know kids are busy, so that they can alternate. I mean, I, I, to me, I think that the board would only want to do that if just the kid was just completely blown off.
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, it makes sense.
No, I'm just, I'm just saying the way it's worded, failure to repeatedly miss. If you show up, we're gonna get rid of you because unless you fail here to meet.
Yeah, I, I think that.
The wording.
Because it's, it's almost like a dou- double negative.
It is a double negative. A failure to miss.
Failure to repeatedly miss, so.
Right, failure to.
If you don't repeatedly miss.
Yeah.
You're failing.
Well, you could just say repeatedly missing meeting.
Right.
Without an excuse, yeah.
Yeah, there you go, you just simplify it. Then catch Tom. Yeah, but it does make sense though.
And then I, I just had one other thing.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
No, no, be sorry.
Term of office, it says each student um, ex officio member will serve one year term.
Yeah, and then, I mean, we would have, so our, so the junior would serve for one year and then then they would start again as a senior.
Well, it's a two-year term for a junior.
Well, I know, but then you have to have, so I.
So they gotta be voted in again, basically.
That's what I, I, yes.
Oh, I thought.
So it's not a guarantee, right?
So I thought.
No, I know, the idea is that they would come in, but they would start like a new term. I mean, we'd have to have something, so, I mean, we could have another line in there about that. Um, if they you could say juniors would have a two-year term.
That's what I wrote.
Oh, is that what you want to have?
I just wrote like initial, unless it's like starting this year. Or if it's gonna be something, because then it contradicts down below when it actually says what your, your term was.
Your term, yeah.
And it says you, you, you roll over from a junior, so if it said as a senior.
Okay.
It's a one-year.
Yeah, I, I think that
Yeah.
We, we need to make that a little more clear that we would like, so like the junior will start out with a two-year term because they're starting.
Two-year term.
And the senior, obviously they're getting a one-year term this time around because.
With the senior, this time it'll be one year.
Right.
Going forward, the senior will be the second half of their two-year term.
Right.
Yeah.
So I don't know, it's.
Yeah, and maybe it just could say something to the fact that the junior does have the option to continue as a two-year term or something like that. Cause maybe they don't want to, maybe they don't wanna be.
Well, cause we say that initial implementation, so.
Do you want to change it? So it's not an obligation, but it's an option?
Yeah, cause it says in subsequent years, one, so the i- initial implementation at the in- initiation of the policy, two students will be selected. One entering their junior year and one entering their senior year. This follows, this allows for immediate student representation while establishing a staggered two-year rotation. In subsequent years, one new student entering their junior year will be selected annually to serve a two-year term. During the second term, that student will assist in onboarding the newly appointed junior student, ensuring continuity and mentorship and student representation. So where's, so where, where?
I think it's up top where it says term of office.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Higher up in that page.
So what you.
Same page.
Yeah, okay.
And then it doesn't have to say it has to be two-year, it could say, you know, it, it's expected two-year.
Yeah.
Yeah, expected, yeah, that'd be great.
So I like how it's explained in the selection process and, you know, the initial implementation and going process.
Do we even have to have that lot, that?
The term of office? No, I don't think so.
Maybe just get rid of it.
It's already, already outlined down below.
But do you, I like that it actually lists it July first to June thirtieth and maybe.
We can add that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Only because I think that's very specific.
Helps the student understand what the obligations are, yeah. And I'm, maybe it was there and I just missed it. But I'm assuming that they should have to try to come to the reorg meeting? Well, I don't, I don't know.
Just to see how you're doing.
If they're starting, then that's one of the first things they have to go to.
And that's not, I mean, I mean, I think you saw the webinar too, that's not the recommendation, the first year at least, because they think, because we are, well, it's late in the process now, so we're gonna be onboarding them.
Right, okay.
And to take that opportunity instead of, yeah. Sitting through that meeting, maybe the second year they sit through it. Cause it's, it is, yeah, it's a learning experience for them.
Yeah.
But to have it at the very beginning.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and it may be that they come to that and they're like, no, don't wanna do this.
Right.
And that's, and that's not a good representation.
No, it is not a good representation of what the board meetings actually are.
Yeah.
Only thing I have, Jorin, is, um, just for consistency.
Mm-hmm.
Bullets on the first page, one through five, the beginning of each sentence probably needs a capital letter, all the rest of them do in the other bullets, that's all.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
So, I know that you've done the survey. And I know you said right now you have about five people, maybe?
Yeah.
How will that end up?
Yeah, we're gonna.
Oh, we're gonna discuss that?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll be quiet then. Do you want?
And it's gonna be the board. I mean, so the twenty-fifth is the deadline.
Okay.
So if we can meet, um, we do the first year have a little grace period, they said it doesn't necessarily have to be July first. So we could do it at our first meeting, but that meeting is long already.
But I don't think that.
Can we get the information ahead of time? Just look at it?
Yeah, I, I think that if we, just like everything else, if we can have the information ahead of time so we can review it, that will make the discussion flow a little faster.
Yep, okay. We'll do that.
And let's face it, we, we don't wanna make them come to the reorg meeting the first time.
Yeah.
This, this.
But just remember, Benny's not gonna be here for the reorg meeting, so we can vote him in on everything that we want to.
Do you have a comment?
Maybe I will.
I'm gonna see.
We would never do that to you, Benny.
So, oh, so, Chris, so that reminded me, when you said something about putting a capital, this is all just, it's not important, but when it's numbered one through five under the second paragraph, um, I think it's fine to leave since it's like a continued sentence like that lowercase, but just get rid of the period at the end.
Well, yeah.
Until number five and you have to use a semicolon.
Right.
It was all, I'm sorry.
They didn't, they didn't do the semicolon with the other one, so I figured just capitalized that. Yeah, that's why.
Yeah, so, so. What's the preference? Which way do you wanna do it? All caps or?
What's the norm for the other ones?
It's mixed up in this one.
Yeah, so the first section, it has lowercase, the second one has.
Yeah, that just was, in other policies, don't we normally capitalize?
Yeah.
Let, let's keep it consistent with other policies, that would be the recommendations.
Okay.
It's a stupid.
Grammar stuff.
That's just a nitpicky.
Yeah.
I love nitpicking. Nitpick away.
Not that I'm the perfect grammar person, that's for sure.
Oh, you do work for a college.
Just because you're a professor doesn't mean you're grammatically correct. Trust me on that one.
Yeah.
It's still five.
Okay, so, um, any further discussion on this one? All those in favor? Any opposed, any abstain? Okay, that brings us to our first opportunity for the comments from the public, um. Each speaker will be limited to a maximum of three minutes and entire public comment period to a maximum of thirty minutes. This may be waived by a majority vote of the board. The board requests that each speaker stand, states their name, residency, and topic of discussion. By law, the board will not permit any public statements regarding individual students or employees. Please be advised that while the board takes public comment very seriously, we are not allowed to comment or respond during the meeting as this is our opportunity to hear from our stakeholders. Items brought to the attention of the board will be taken under consideration for future responses or action. Or the proper staff member will get back to you at the appropriate time. Is there anybody who would like to speak at this time? Okay. Commendations.
Stuff.
Lots of exciting stuff going on.
Okay, I'll find a right list. Things going on, too many policies. Okay, um, the, uh, art and music departments, the music booster club and the talented Whitney Point Central School District students for their roles in the district art show. Showcasing artwork and music from students in all schools, so if you didn't get to see the art show, you certainly were missing something. It, I think every year, it just is, it is more amazing that the talent that is in this district, um, just really incredible and all the performances were wonderful and all the ice cream was wonderful, right?
That's always a hit.
Yeah.
We didn't have a lot left. That's always the goal.
Mr. Jones and Mrs. Pollan and all the talented students involved in the twenty twenty-five cabaret. Um, Mrs. Monaco, Mrs. Holly, Ms. Burdick, Officer Nois, faculty staff, and all the students who attended for a me- for a memorable prom held on June seventh, twenty twenty-five. Mrs. Tupi, Officer Nois, the after-prom committee, Mrs. Holly, Ms. Burdick, and the many volunteers for putting together a fun after-prom party. And all the students who attended who had a great time. Mrs. Holly, Ms. Burdick, Ms. Sexton, Ms. Kohler, and the Whitney Point High School faculty and staff for their successful high school awards and scholarship ceremony. And the many people and organizations for the, who donated money for scholarships um, to the Whitney Point High School graduating seniors. Congratulations to all the recipients, it was quite an evening. Ms. Thomas and the Yearbook Club for coordinating the top twenty display case located outside of the high school auditorium, so if you didn't see that when you were walking by, it's, it's lovely. Um, Mrs. Galligley and Mrs. Bolson for creating senior banners to celebrate and showcase our senior class students, so if you haven't walked down that hallway. I don't know if you know that, but we make them right in-house. Uh, Ms. Pollan, Mrs. LeCana, and the seventh and eighth grade, uh, band and chorus students for a successful trip to Hershey um, for the Music in the Parks competition. The Binghamton Rumble Ponies for recognizing the Whitney Point varsity field hockey team. Miss, uh, Becker, Mrs. Hotkinson, Chaperones, and students for a successful eighth grade trip to Washington DC. High school seniors Gabriella Black and Andrew Turner for earning the section for interscholastic athletic conference character council award, so. Mr. Zaliga, Mrs. Burns, the SOAR committee, faculty, staff, and students for a fun-filled best day ever held Thursday, June twelve.
What did they have this year?
Yeah, what did they have?
I don't know, but there was a lot of pie in the face, I can tell.
I kept hearing about it, I never, we, you never know when it's gonna be, right?
That's right.
Yeah, personally, I was working on editing the photos and they will be on.
Oh, that'll be fun to see, thank you. Love it.
Uh, Mr. Zaliga, Mrs. Burns, faculty, staff, and eighth grade students for a successful evening of awards and celebrations on Friday, June thirteenth. They had a dance on Friday, June thirteenth.
Awesome, good stuff.
Yeah.
Okay, old business, we have none. Presentations, we have none.
Yay.
Okay, um.
And it was all done very well already.
Thank you, Tom, that is true.
For the consent agenda, um, I need a motion first.
Need a motion first and then.
Yeah, we can't discuss it, we can't. Thank you, Tiana, and a second. Thank you, Tom.
I would, um, like for, uh, the consent agenda for the fall coaching recommendations to be pulled out of the consent agenda, please. And be reviewed at the next board meeting.
Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Tiana and Tom, are you both okay with, um, amending your motion?
Yes.
To take this into account?
Yes.
Okay. So would that change? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstain? Hey. Retirement resignations, um, Beatrice Ayers, bus monitor effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, may have a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Tiana, and a second. Thank you, Molly. Any questions or comments?
Thank her very much.
Thank you.
Very well.
How long is she?
Uh, I think she's been here ten years.
Okay.
Enjoy.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstain? Veronica Gober, bus driver effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Thank you, Tiana. Thank you, Chris. Any questions or comments?
I'm here close to thirty-eight years.
Whoa. Wow, oh, she could probably drive that school bus with her eyes closed.
Is she gonna be like Ed and just keep showing up?
Yay.
Maybe not, the extra runs in between.
That's awesome.
She deserves a gold.
Yeah, she does. We budgeted for her.
That's our budget guy, he's about the painted.
Bottom dollar.
Three friends makes a pretty cool stuff.
We'll make it bus yellow.
There you go.
There you go. We'll give her a signed copy of Junie B. Jones and the stinky smelly. Wait, the stupid smelly bus.
That's funny. Oh, that's cute.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstain? Okay, we're going to create a couple of positions, um, maintenance mechanic may have a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Tiana, and a second.
Second, go ahead.
Was that Aubrey?
Yeah.
Okay, any questions or comments? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstain? Senior account clerk may have a motion. Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Benny. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstain? Physical education teacher may have a motion. Thank you, Molly, and a second.
Second.
Thank you, Tiana. Any questions or comments?
Looking forward to it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Appointments. Appointment of Mary Singer, bus monitor, effective June eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, may have a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Tiana, and a second.
Okay.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
May have um, any opposed and any abstain, sorry.
You are doing fantastic.
Yeah, just my tongue keeps tripping over itself. Appointment of Ann Lee, bus driver, effective June eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, may have. Thank you, Aubrey.
We'll take any bus driver.
That's right. Thank you.
Um, any questions or comments?
Yay. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Lisa Stofan, senior account clerk, payroll and benefits coordinator, effective June eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, may have a motion. Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Benny. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Appointment of Christopher Lamore, maintenance mechanic, effective July first, twenty twenty-five, may have a motion. Thank you, Tom, and a second.
Second.
Thank you, Molly. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? The three-year probationary appointment of Valerie Priscott, teacher literacy instructional coach in the elementary education tenure area, effective September first, twenty twenty-five, may have a motion. Well, we have to vote on it first. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
We're so glad to have you back, Val.
The dancing queen has returned.
And I just wanna say that after saying welcome.
Has returned.
After saying welcome back, the theme song to Welcome Back Carter, Carter is now going through my head.
There we go. I love it. I love it.
Um, the appointment of Tiffany Quail, typist, effective July first.
So moved.
Thank you, Tiana, and a second.
Second.
Thank you, Aubrey.
She will do great.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? The three-year probationary appointment of Samantha Driscoll, physical education teacher in the physical education teacher tenure area, effective September first, twenty twenty-five, may have a motion. Thank you, Chris.
Second.
Thank you, Benny. Any questions or comments?
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Um, the four-year probationary appointment of Matthew Bruno, physical education teacher in the physical education teacher tenure area, effective September first, twenty twenty-five, may have a motion.
Go ahead. Molly's got it.
Molly and Chris.
I, I didn't see his application anyplace, Stacy.
I didn't see it in the system. Did you get a Facebook copy?
I didn't get the copy.
No.
There you go. Thanks. Sorry.
I, I just wanted to double check to see whether or not I should abstain in voting or not.
Gotcha.
I know him.
Okay.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
I'm just abstaining. That's all. No reason besides I know him well.
Yeah.
Yep. Transportation requests. Um, approve the following transportation request for the twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six school year um to go to Central Baptist Christian Academy, Madison Moore, Caldwell Moore, and Phoebe Moore, may have a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Tiana, and a second.
Second.
Thank you, Molly. Any questions or comments? And just Michelle to let you know, um, if a student would like to go to um a parochial school, the district is required by law to provide transportation within certain limitations.
Thank you.
Yep. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Um, was there one other originally?
Yes. Document it had twenty-four, twenty-five, so reached out to them. Um. Maybe it wasn't till Monday morning, uh, and I asked for an update of it and I didn't get it, so we.
Okay, so we're, okay. Okay.
Yeah, yes.
The Whitney Point Preschool and Daycare has requested um several dates for the buses from July ninth through August twentieth, twenty twenty-five, may have a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Benny. Some of the places they're going to sounded pretty fun. Yeah.
Good summer.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Non-resident students. May have a motion. Thank you, Tom. And a second. Thank you, Aubrey. Did we have any questions or comments?
Just real quick, these are the students that are grandfathered in, correct?
These are the students that are employees' kids.
Oh, employees' kids.
Or grandfathers.
Or grand, or grandfather. Thank you. I need to clarify before.
There's the one exception, right?
All right.
But the people who we gave a year grace period, that's over.
That's over, so this is only for children of faculty. Or staff, sorry.
Staff, yeah.
Staff in general.
Yes.
Thank you for clarifying.
And it's for the twenty-five, twenty-six.
Yep.
Yep.
Oh, it says twenty-four, twenty-five at the top.
Out here.
Okay, so um, Tom and Aubrey, okay with changing those dates to twenty-five, twenty-six? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Who would like to do a motion to approve bid numbers twenty-five, twenty-six dash zero one for janitorial supply?
I'm excited. I'd like the motion.
Okay.
I love the smell of clean.
Yeah. So I have Tiana and Tom. Um, any comments or questions? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, we have several contract agreements to go through. July first, twenty twenty-five to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight, contract between superintendent of the Whitney Point Central School District and the Clerical Association, may have a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Benny. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Do, July twenty-fifth, excuse me, July first, twenty twenty-five to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight, contract between the superintendent of the Whitney Point Central School District and the Custodians Association, may have a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Molly, and a second.
Second.
Uh, was it Aubrey or Chris first? Okay.
Oh, I didn't hear Aubrey.
Okay. Um, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? July first, twenty twenty-five to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight, contract between the superintendent of the Whitney Point Central School District and the Transportation Association, may have a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Tom, and a second. Thank you, Benny. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? July first, twenty twenty-five to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight, agreement between the superintendent of the Whitney Point Central School District and the nonrepresented group, may have a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Molly, and a second. Thank you, Aubrey. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? July first, twenty twenty-five to July, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight, contract between the superintendent of the Whitney Point Central School District and the supervisor of transportation, may have a motion.
So moved.
Oh, Chris.
Doesn't matter.
I heard Tiana first.
Oh.
And then I heard Chris.
I was a cheerleader only to sixth grade then.
Any questions or comments? Okay.
Long day.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Aye, yes.
Yeah.
It's approved. Chris, all flustered.
July first, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, contract agreement between the Whitney Point Central School District and G and E Therapies, may have a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Benny, and a second.
Second.
Thank you, Tom. Any questions or comments?
That's just because they have to renew it every year because of the therapy, this stuff. Okay.
Good job getting that all done.
So um, just to say, we very much appreciate all of these people. What's what keeps our district running in some, all kinds of ways, very hardworking people.
And I want to commend everybody in terms of the fact that that is a lot of contracts to be reviewing and the fact that they are done and agreed upon and we're voting on them tonight is amazing.
Yes, it is. Absolutely. That's why I said, good job.
Yep, I know.
That is a lot of work right there.
Yep. So how about if we vote on the G and E therapies?
Yes.
Everybody approve it?
Aye.
Okay, funding reserves. Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education does and hereby approve the following reserve transactions for the twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six school year. Funding of the Retirement Contribution Reserve, A eight-two-five, in the amount of three hundred fifty thousand dollars for the future employee retirement system ERS expenses. Source of funds is the unassigned fund balance, A nine-one-seven. Transfer out of the Retirement Contribution Contribution Reserve sub, sub-fund, A eight-two-eight in the amount of twenty-eight thousand dollars to transfer to the Retirement Contribution Reserve, A eight-two-five. Funding of the Employee Benefit and Accrued Liabilities Reserve, A eight-six-seven in the amount up to two hundred thousand dollars. Source of funds is the unassigned fund balance, A nine-one-seven. Funding of the Capital Reserve, A eight-seven-nine, up to the amount of three hundred fifty thousand dollars. Source of funds is the unassigned fund balance, A nine-one-seven. May have a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Tiana. Thank you, Benny. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Brings it to superintendent's update.
So we have a um, there's been lots of fun activities this month of June. Um, I was gonna talk to you about a little bit about the key coming up, the plans, um, you know, unless it's really unbearable and we can, you know, not uh sustain a reasonable environment in school that we're gonna try and stay in session when we're planned to stay in session. Um, I just, I explained to you earlier what the mitigation plans are and what if we, where we would go if we really needed to relocate. Also, we um have graduation coming up. Is everybody gonna attend?
Yes.
Okay, no.
Missing the July first.
Okay.
We'll have a.
Are you going someplace fun?
Where do we always go?
Florida.
Hot there, Benny.
My son's down there.
Oh, very.
Isn't your mom down there too?
She's actually home this summer.
Oh, okay.
I had to fly down and drive her home.
Having weather shock right now.
Complaining about how cold it is.
Yeah.
Well, she'll be happy on Monday and Tuesday.
So we have a little bit of a break in that, so we have our, our next board meeting July first. So we will, I will beforehand give you the applicants. We, we need to leave sometime. Do you wanna do that in executive session at the meeting? If we need to have discussion about the student board members?
Um, I think so, that we, so that we can get them.
Executive session.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll, you know, try and be strategic um with things. I mean, that, that meeting does go faster because we can. It's not as bad as it used to be. Um, and the other uh pieces that we, we need to firm up, do you wanna let me take the lead on onboarding the students and, and put something together and then meet and present that to you at that meeting also?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Sounds good. The capacity. God bless at the time.
But it, but if you need our assistance or help, you know how to find all of us.
I'm looking forward to it. It sounds like. It's gonna be great.
Say about your, fight about having that.
Yeah.
Yep.
And um, then the last thing is that um our retreat, do you wanna discuss how, like we have the time, we set it aside. Are you gonna take the lead on, on that or do you want me to, and Stacy to arrange something?
How about if we work in conjunction?
Okay.
And the three of us work on it?
Okay.
Um, I would, if you guys think it's appropriate, I would like to invite whoever we choose for students. Um, I would like to invite them to.
The retreat.
To the retreat, at least for the first, maybe half hour or so, not for the whole thing 'cause I don't wanna like get them not wanting to do this. But it would be nice to be able to meet them in a more informal.
Yeah, right.
Um, or situation and, and personally and, and not meet them for the first time in a meeting.
Yes. All right.
Um, and if anybody has anything, any suggestions of things they would like to have covered at the retreat, um, let one of the three of us know so that we can make sure it gets included.
Here for the last meeting?
Uh huh.
Is it just one evening? So just a few hours?
Yeah, that's what we said.
Yeah.
Five to nine we have.
They just want city chicken, as long as we have.
That's what I was gonna say. Can we have city chicken for dinner that night?
He wants it. I wanna come just for the city chicken.
I'll save you some, okay? Um.
I did speak to Joe Menard, so he said if he's free, he would come for nothing. So if you have something you wanted to talk on, he said he would do that.
Aye. So what type of things?
He's the educa, he's the head of our educational leadership program and takes care of all of our interns.
Okay. Joe, yeah.
So if there's just something he's, you know, that you guys might, something, and he said he'd be willing to.
Anything free is good. Are we gonna harass Frank?
Well, ask Zach. Anything free is good, right back?
I think it's a short window and she's gonna, I've already gotten him, so maybe we just need a quick reminder on them, but not him.
Yeah.
I was thinking.
Maybe.
Date on that again, just to.
It's uh August fifth.
I thought I had it in August and I kept thinking, I thought it was July, but I had it.
And I'm, like, like Benny, July fifteenth is ringing in my head for something for school board and I, and I don't know why either.
July fifteen?
Maybe we were talking about that as a.
You guys are gonna have a big party for me.
When, I don't know if you have to mention that, that we might need to have a board meeting at the end of July, did you say, Joanne?
Well, depending on, on how hiring goes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Um, oh, I know why, because uh we may have had a situation that we would have to deal with, if that's. Um, oh, I know why, because, uh, we may have had a situation that we would have to deal with, if that's.
What time do you want us here for graduation?
We usually get here at five. They usually make arrangements for lists. Um, like the seating chart and the list for the students. We try to accommodate everybody's wishes for giving diplomas to certain people. But please understand that we can't always do that without looking like a, uh. Well, that wasn't what I was thinking of.
Go with unorganized.
I'm thinking of a clown car. You know?
I think I wonder, I think I know who Molly would like to hand one to.
Start crying. Oh, Sam. Oops, I'm getting confused.
I, I have a, I have a couple of students who are near and dear, but, you know, like I said, we can't always accommodate it without us looking like we're a big mess. No, absolutely, but it's like.
Can you hand out diplomas to your kids? It's five o'clock in the main office.
But we'll have a list and if there are students that you would like to be able to give, um, their diplomas to, if you want to send me that beforehand, then we, I can get started on it and then have everybody approve it. Once we get a list made, usually somebody's willing to make a copy for each of us. But we start with one list so that we're not trying to write it out seven times or whatever. Okay, um, any takers for the comments from the public?
Haven't had excitement from the public in a while.
That does bring us to Board of Education comments, which we've taken care of some of them, talking about the retreat. Um, we talked about graduation. Is there anything else we need to bring up?
I have a speech.
No way to stand up?
You can wait one second. Just a reminder, especially to the newer board members. NISBA has their leadership conference. It is, uh, the thirty-first of July to August first. Well, it's actually August first and August second. So if anybody wants to go, I am going. I've already taken care of everything, but I'll be up there. So if anybody else wants to go, just let me know. Albany, a hundred and nine dollars. It's one of the most affordable conferences we can go to.
Does that include accommodations?
No, you have to pay for your own hotel space, though. But it is a very inexpensive conference and we do learn a lot, so.
And you're very good about sharing that information, so that's.
Which I rely on because the summers are tough with me.
We don't think I'm going to go laughing ahead of time.
Before Tiana does her speech.
Only a minute.
Does, does anybody else?
I just wanted to say that, um, for the people that know, um, I ran into Kathy Drisco on Mother's Day. And she was so excited that she was asked to be able to participate in the after prom. She was so. Done it for a long time. I just wanted to say that, that how, it was just, it was so nice to.
And I will make, because there are new people who are going to be taking over after prom party next year. I will make sure that they know that they need to contact her. Because she really enjoys doing the bingo. She decorates the library. She gets some prizes on her own. You know, we supply her with some too. And it's something that she really loves doing.
And I, I should, I guess I should preface that. She was on the board for a very long time. She was in the district for a very long.
She was on the board, yeah.
No, she was not on the board for twenty-six.
She wasn't?
Sorry.
It was close to twenty. I want to say it was nineteen.
Sorry about that.
No, that's okay.
Because I remember her, she was on the board when I was coming on.
Yeah, and she started after I did. And the only reason why she had to leave was because we had to move out of the district.
Lovely lady.
She wasn't able to find a place here, but.
Thanks for sharing.
It was, it was very nice. Just, I was just very happy to see how excited she was.
Oh, yeah, she came and found me that night and she was like, here, I'm here. She was very excited. So, yeah, I will make sure that, um, the next group to take it over knows that. That, yeah, absolutely.
Oh, and one other thing, we had a lovely velvety salutatorian dinner. It was very, very nice. Although it was supposed to start at five forty-five, it didn't start until six thirty. But that's okay. Everything went well, really well and our students.
Yeah, I wanted to go, but it was more important for Tim Lewis, who's also a, an Eagles Nest officer, to go than it was for me since his daughter Abby was going to be there. So I stayed behind to do the meeting and he went to that. Okay. Tiana.
It's not too emotional, but I, it's mostly to you too. So I wrote it down because I did not want to lose my train of thought. So as a board member for the past three years, this experience has been everything. I'm going to preface it, preface with that. Challenging, rewarding, emotional at times, eye-opening, and above all, meaningful. I truly valued the opportunity to get to know each and every one of you, as well as the dedicated school administrators, especially you, Joanne, who worked tirelessly to make our district a better place for students. Serving as a board member is not an easy task. It carries significant responsibilities and requires tough decisions, but we did it because we care deeply. We share a passion for creating an environment where every child has the opportunity to learn, grow, and thrive, while also supporting the hardworking administration, faculty, and staff who make it possible. A special thanks to you, Zach, and of course you, Stacy, and I know Shannon's not here. You guys really go above and beyond all the time. It's been an honor to work alongside, alongside such a committed group of individuals. I am sincerely grateful for the relationships we've built and the collaboration we've shared. Thank you for your support and the honest conversations, although difficult at times, are much appreciated and our shared vision. I wish you all continued success and fulfillment in the years ahead, and it truly has been a pleasure working with all of you. I will continue to come to the board meetings, but not the next one. So thank you again for allowing me to be part of this amazing group and I really learned a lot. And I got, I got, I got some really good value out of being on the school board, so thank you.
Don't give her her name, don't give her her name tag, that way she can.
And, and what I was going to say, Tiana, is if further on down the road, if it's more compatible for you to be on the board, run again.
Yes, I definitely will. But I look forward to passing the baton to you and it is a really great group. And what I do love about this group is it's a diverse group and we all bring different values and you will see that. Um, the first year was a little bit tough, but I think the, the group has done an excellent job, um, bringing on new members. Um, new committee members, so I think that that has been extremely helpful. So again, thank you all and I wish you all the very best.
Thank you, Tiana, for all the work you did.
Now we can have punch.
Well, we got to close the meeting first.
Well, um, I, I do, we do have to close the meeting, but I have a couple of questions first before we close it. Um, we have two things on tap. We need to have an executive session with just the board members. Um, to go over, um, evaluations. Is there anybody? And, and to eat. Um, I know that Shell needs to, we need to go over the, um, reorg meeting agenda with her because it's a good way to explain why things are on there. Is there anybody else who wants to do that? Or should I make an appointment to meet with just Michelle to go over it all, um, individually? I don't know how everybody's feeling tonight, if they want to do a quick run-through with it after we eat for a few minutes. Um, if, or if you want me to do it individually with her and then we'll go straight into our executive session.
I'm happy to stick around. I'm happy to stick around.
I agree. This is pretty early.
And it, and either way, I just want to make sure that, you know. So we will not end our regular meeting. We will go over the stuff with Michelle in our regular meeting. But after that, we will adjourn into executive session and go over the evaluation.
We can grab food while we're.
Yes, absolutely.
And that's suffer, so those veggies are really good.
By the flag. Oh, and I have to ask for people too.